Okay.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah.
It keeps something.
Yeah, it keeps.
Yeah, but it's better than nothing.
Okay. Welcome to Santaquin City Council Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, November fifteenth and uh seven o'clock. That clock's just fast. Don't worry about it. So we have a roll call tonight uh. But I think I'll dispense with that and just say council member Adcock is not present. He's traveling back from uh visit with his children and uh all the other four are here representing the council. We're good to go. So uh pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask if someone would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Aldo, please stand. Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh I'd also like to ask if someone would offer an invocation or an inspirational thought. Seeing none, I'll do that. Our Father in heaven, humbly we bow our heads before thee and gratitude for the many freedoms we have living in this wonderful country. To be able to represent the citizens of this city through this city council. And to be able to be here with those that are in attendance. We're grateful for these times, for the challenges that we have and the hope and the aspiration that we have to meet all of those challenges and to do it at our very best. We're grateful for these good people as they serve the and serve the citizens of Santaquin. We're grateful that they take the time of their day to be here and to uh work hard on every assignment given. We're grateful for the staff. And as we open this meeting, we pray for thy spirit to be here, help and inspire us in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Um I need to know if there is a declaration of potential conflicts of interest on any piece of business that's been brought up to this point. Oh, seeing none, then we're good to go. There's a consent agenda that has the minutes of three meetings. Uh the city bills and expenditures and uh resolution to surplus an item. Are there any questions on any of those topics, the meetings, the budget, or the resolution?
Yeah, I have a question on the uh bills.
Mm-hmm.
On the the bills on, I don't know what page it's on, but I seen it. There was a purchase of diesel fuel four times. Are we, is that, are we storing that much diesel?
Uh yes, we do. We have a either a five hundred or a thousand gallon diesel fuel tank and uh gasoline as well down at the public works. There's a, there's large tanks down there that we use to to purchase fuel and be able to fuel things like lawn mowers, although they don't, they're not diesel, but tractors, snow plows, et cetera, et cetera.
I just see it was, we did it the same, four times the same day.
I'll do it right after.
Um I don't know about that one, but I can certainly look into it and see if there's.
I mean, I'm assuming we're just, it's, so we do have, so we'll have diesel on hand in case.
We do, that's correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Any concerns on anything? Seeing none, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Meekum, seconded by Councilman Hathaway. Um we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
The uh consent agenda passes and uh we'll move on. So we've got a volunteer of the month, Mr. Jesse Christopher. What a good guy. Do you have a sound system with you or anything that you brought? So Colleen is going to introduce him and for all of us that have been to many things, we know this guy.
Okay. We are happy to recognize Jesse Christopher um as our November Volunteer of the Month. He has volunteered his time, equipment, and talents to make fine arts events happen this year in our city. He serves on the Santaquin Arts Committee. This year, he volunteered as a sound technician and brought and used his own soundboard to the youth performing arts competition in April of this year, an event that he also was the master of ceremonies. He again volunteered to be the sound technician for the Santaquin Art Festival in June. Jesse did an excellent job with both and helped in a huge way to make these events a success. He also did all of the sound for the concerts in the park on Monday evenings throughout the summer. These were such fun events where families could come and shop the farmer's market and listen to live music. He has been in the background, working towards so many things and promoting the arts in our city in such a positive way. He and his wife Stephanie have lived in Santaquin since two thousand ten. We have five children ranging from thirteen to one-year-old. Jesse grew up in Spanish Fork, graduated from Spanish Fork High School, and received his bachelor's degree in information systems from BYU. During his time at BYU, he toured with the BYU folk dance ensemble as a drummer. Jesse is the vice president of his family-owned business, Christopher Publications. In his free time, he enjoys performing music with multiple bands and recording music in his home. He has volunteered with the youth of our community for over a decade in various ways and has touched many lives. Thank you, Jesse, for all of your efforts and hard work. We appreciate all that you do.
Speech.
It's not always easy to be recognized. So um I I guess I'm just very grateful for the the RAP tax and that we can buy equipment so that we can have these kind of events. Uh what I do can't be done if you don't have equipment. So I appreciate that.
Hang on.
Thank you.
Your kids are gonna love you tonight. Unless unless you eat it off. Why don't you put that on your office wall? This is what we really want you to have. That's very cool. And we want a picture too. Yeah, not too close. Chin up, from Chin up. Jesse, you are the man. Anybody that has a wooden drum and can sit there and play and accentuate what a guitarist was singing to, that was incredible that night. That was cool. Thank you. So uh next we have Blake Jorgensen, who's a member of SARS that uh wanted to make a presentation tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Um I'm not sure if you're familiar, uh but on November third and fourth, our Utah County Sheriff's Search and Rescue Team ransacked Santaquin. Uh we carried out six different exercises from Dry Mountain to Bull Canyon and up in Santaquin Canyon. I am here to represent from the sheriff's office as well as the search and rescue team to just thank the city, its citizens, as well as the fire and EMS for all of your cooperation and help in organizing and carrying out the exercises. Um Friday night, we were able to access the Gray Cliffs uh property. So we received approval from the property owner and they were very gracious to let us access their property. Um several citizens of Santaquin were kind enough to transport cars over to the station here and allow us uh to park our cars for the night. In the morning, um Santaquin Fire and EMS were vital and and very cooperative in helping with a mass casualty incident. Uh the search and rescue team were very grateful for their treatment and transport of the patients. And um a huge thank you to Chief Lynn for allowing our, about forty members of our team and spouses to have dinner here in the training room. So thank you very much. Uh one thing that I will say, we've had some members on our team for over ten to fifteen years. They've never been in Santaquin Canyon. Um so maybe if you're someone's cord recording this, they can send it to the Forest Service. But many of them commented that they had never been there, but it was the prettiest canyon that they've been in, in the county. Um and there was even an individual that's been wanting to move from the Provo Canyon, mouth of of the Provo Canyon area, and hadn't considered Santaquin. And after uh the different exercises, he's he's got it on it, on the top of his priority list. So thanks again to the city. We really appreciate um all your cooperation and hopefully it's uh a good budding relationship between the sheriff's office and and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montoya is uh responsible for our youth city council that does a lot of things, sometimes behind the scenes. She's done an incredible job with them, but she wanted to bring a couple of things to our attention.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We have three amazing members of our youth council tonight. Would you mind stepping up to the microphone? I know I'm putting you guys on the spot. So members of our youth city council take turns attending council meetings throughout the year. And tonight, we have our mayor pro tem Olivia Vincent, and we have Miles Broadbent and Gavin Broadbent. And their older sister is our previous mayor who graduated last year, and so now she's away at college. But we're really um proud of you and thankful that you are willing to come and spend about an hour visiting a full council meeting. And is there anything that you would like to share with the mayor or the rest of the council or the um those listening about youth city council and your experience?
I can. Um I'm just really thankful that we can come and be able to sit in on a meeting. It's really fun to be able to kind of see how everything works. Um and kind of, I don't know, as I'm like leaning over with Miles, I'm like, we do that. Look at the, look, the agenda. Like, it's so fun to see kind of like how we run our meetings and how similar they are and really thankful for Betsy and for all that she does for us. Um and for making it a very, you know, positive and um, you know, all-encompassing experience for everyone that's in youth council. Um I think something that's really, really benefited, like benefited me personally in being involved in the youth council is being able to kind of just see the the positive change and and how good our community is. I love being involved and being able to um like help at so many events and be able to help set up for things and be able to serve our community too and be involved in all aspects and um of everyone in our, in our city. And I think it's really beautiful and I really love kind of how everything works. So yeah, thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Olivia.
Kind of just going on what Olivia said. Yeah, I've been doing youth city council for about like a year and a half now. It's really fun. Like going out and like doing things. It's just we get to help so much and it really gets me out doing things and like it's a lot of fun too, just being able to help with all the events and be able to like make Santaquin better.
Thanks, Miles. Gavin's one of our newest members. He joined right like the day Orchard Day started, kind of.
Yeah, so I just joined really recently and already it's been really fun and it's fun to just help out with the community, even if it's just in small ways, just like helping out with little booths during Orchard Days or anything. I, oh, I don't know, it's just really fun. Bad Betsy would do it.
Awesome. Thanks, Gavin. And just so that everyone um here knows, each member of youth city council commits to doing at least thirty-five service hours in the city per year um of membership and um and attending our regular um youth city council meetings regularly. And at least seventy-five percent and helping with Orchard Days is one of the required activities. And then um if they meet those expectations and are considered a member in good standing, then they earn the benefit of being able to go to Local Officials' Day at the Capitol and meet our area state legislators and touring the Capitol and having a fun lunch with other members of youth city councils all over the state. And we have the best group and they're all amazing kids and they're all very busy. And um I was in tears last night when I was telling them this, that I just am so thankful that they take the time to share with us and to make positive contributions to our community when they could be doing a lot of other things that are not as productive. And I'm so proud of them and thankful for them. So thanks, guys.
Um okay, let's move into the uh.
Any, any public forum? Has anybody signed up for the pub?
No, nobody had.
Okay.
So I just put it aside. Unless there is somebody that has public forum ideas. Okay, hearing none. Building permit, business license report, and then go into the new businesses.
Yep. So uh on the screen, you have the the building permit report for, that was generated today. So first of all, calendar year. We're sitting at two hundred and fifty-seven total residential dwelling units. That's uh split into a hundred and thirty-nine single-family and a hundred and eighteen multifamily. Um and you can, you can see that compared to last year. Uh again, this is new. This is the second time we've done this. We are generating a fiscal year report as well, which is uh July first to June thirtieth. So we're still just barely past the first quarter of this fiscal year. Uh and as you see, the the numbers are are quite a bit less. Uh so right now, we're at forty-three uh for this year, which is uh six more since, since the last report, which is November first. And as you can see, last year was was still when the the economy was really booming. So that the first quarter of the last fiscal year was two hundred and fifty-five. So uh kind of an interesting thing to compare calendar year and fiscal year uh with with their their previous years. New businesses, they're all home occupations. Uh there's, there's five of them. Uh and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about them. Or the 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 building permit reports.
Okay. Thank you. Um the Development and Renewal Agency. In order to move into that, we go from.
The ordinance for the active transportation.
Uh I skipped that on purpose. I didn't want anybody to be bored.
Kai's hoping you won't skip that on purpose. He's like to go home tonight sometimes.
Okay, I'll back up. The ordinance for the active transportation plan. Now that was a simple one to read through. I think it was a hundred and five or a hundred and fifteen pages. I hope you all got through that and made any corrections you needed to and sent them through. So and they've been online, so everybody here and everybody online could have read those. So it it's a good plan. So it puts together some pretty good things, comprehensive, a lot of information about bicycles, trails, and uh it even includes the new mountain bike park. So um Jason, do you wanna move on that?
Yeah, so just quick introduction. Uh we have here our consultant with Parametrics, Kai Toinaka. Uh he was, he was the the one who really helped put this plan together. This was a plan that was done in um uh the same time as the general plan update. So there was a couple uh like public open houses and and um uh you know, other things that he was able to piggyback off of to get some input from the public. Uh uh the the general plan was was adopted um earlier this year uh in June. And so this, this is kind of uh wrapping this up as well um uh with the effort that's been put forward uh in in the planning of of this. Now, I've, I explained in the planning commission, and I think it's worth explaining here, that the active transportation plan is kind of unique. A lot of communities are doing it right now, and I think it's because of such a strong emphasis on on trails and uh, you know, uh bike lanes and other forms of active transportation. Um so this is, this is a a plan that I would say is kind of uh guiding like the uh the general plan, uh but it's more detailed, uh but maybe doesn't have quite as 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 much detail as as a master plan that that gives the um justification for the impact fees that we charge. So there's a lot of detail in this plan, which I think will be a um, you know, will 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 kind of help with with a lot of the plans related to to transportation in general. I should say that that Kai is very knowledgeable about our transportation system. He also is the consultant that helped us uh with our our uh transportation master plan update, which happened a couple of years ago. So he, he knows very much about our transportation system, and so it was, it was a uh a great fit for him to do this active transportation plan. This plan was paid for uh through funds that we acquired uh through MAG. Uh so there was a fifty thousand dollars that we got and and that was used to to pay for this plan. So with that said, I won't go in in detail throughout the plan. Uh Kai can answer any questions that you have. Uh I I should say another thing that 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 we uh um, you know, wanted to make sure that this was in before it was adopted was was some details related to the uh Prospector View Bike Bicycle Park. So he, he's got some some information and and an exhibit in there that gives some details uh with that. I guess I should say, this is, this is a plan. This is nothing that is is binding. This is nothing that 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 isn't fluid. Uh this can change and be amended and uh but it gives us a good basis and and gives the city uh planning commission and city council a good basis for for when land use decisions are being made uh to understand kind of what the bigger picture is for for how all these uh transportation networks work together. So with that, I would, you know, turn it to you. If you have comments or questions or or if you have questions for staff or questions for for Kai, uh we're, we're here to to uh to support you and in your consideration of an ordinance to adopt this active transportation plan.
So I guess uh as you read through it, are there any questions that you want to bring up? Anything that uh you you questioned as you went through it? Okay, so you guys are gonna be quiet for a minute.
Well, I don't have, I don't have any questions, but I just have a thought that I really appreciate how detailed it is and how clear it is. And um and also the kind of stages of um like the the green section. And can we scroll to that?
Page seven ninety-two.
The sections of projects. The maps are very helpful. Um the visuals, that, yeah. Yes, those sections. I think those are um, those are very helpful to have different phases and um estimated costs. So that we can, we and all the residents can see, okay, we want this, but this is about how much it would cost to get it. So what are we willing to do to get it? So I think that all of that information's very helpful. So thanks for including all of that.
And I think uh Kai understood that as this came together, this is kind of an à la carte uh phase grouping that we would almost have to pick our way down through as we could afford it or find uh grants or ways to fund this because it turns out to be uh many millions of dollars in the end as you get down through it. And as nice as it would be to have it all together, I think it's great that it's in the, in the study and in the report.
All broken down.
Need to figure out a way to prioritize and then find a way to fund.
Yep.
So that's what I saw. Um very good report. Um like I say, there was sticker shock as you're looking at all of these going, oh my goodness, this would cost a lot. But there are many, many good things that are here and uh I think through time, we're gonna have to adopt these as we go. Dave?
I'd just like to make a comment. I, I thought it was a good plan. Uh I would, I would just encourage the, the residents of Santaquin to get online and look at it. And for those that feel that transportation is as easy as they think it is, to get on there and look at those numbers and 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 really look into exactly what it costs to get what they think is, would be a better deal. So.
Yeah. Well, there's, there are some things that are coming about that are in that report and uh so I feel like we're moving as best as we possibly can.
Yep.
We certainly need to consider what, what are the bo- best modes here that we need to get in uh our budgets or find funding for and do it.
Oh, I do have one question, another question. Um.
The first one wasn't a question. So this is a question.
This is a statement. Now, this is a question.
Okay.
I'm just trying to keep you on your toes, Mayor.
I caught you.
So um Kai, you probably are familiar or have heard about the the state legislatures and governors um plan to do a statewide trail system, yes?
Absolutely.
And um they're gonna be trying to have some funding for that, correct? Um is, have you seen anything in that plan that is also in this plan?
Um so right now, there's a lot of big question marks on what actually that means and and we do a lot of work with UDOT and um Heidi Goodheart and their Active Transportation Manager. So we're pretty close to what um you know, as close as you can get in terms of having an inside look of what that is, but um it's hard to say at this point. Um but there is a lot of optimism that there would be a lot of legislative support and backing um which would result in in good funding for it. I will say that it's likely that a good foundation for that, you know, interstate of active transportation uh that they're planning for would be the US Bike Route system. And our firm helped uh plan the US Bike Route system throughout the state. And uh part of that route is um, does go through Harriman and is noted in the plan. And it comes down um.
Is that the seventy-seven?
Yes, it comes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's a, US Bike Route seventy-seven co- uh connects Idaho Cleardown to Arizona. Um and it, it comes down one ninety, it's one ninety-eight and then through the interchange and down uh Highway six. So improvements for active transportation um will likely have good support uh on those routes from UDOT and will likely be included in in init- that initiative.
Great.
But speculation at this point.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I, I was just curious. Um I ran into a whole bunch of bikers that were coming from California headed east and they were at the Maverick dining on fine Diet Coke and, you know, hot dogs and things like that. But uh they said to me that the Highway six from the east coast or the west coast that comes through Bishop and and through Nevada and through Santaquin and beyond was actually a US route that was noted. But I didn't take it as it was called Route seventy-seven. Are those two different ones or are you aware of that route?
So um I think they are one of the same. Um so there there's been a designation, uh I believe it was early twenty twenty-one um by ASHTO designating US Bike Route seventy-seven through the state of Utah, which connects a, a number of of state highways, mostly on state highways, including uh Route six for a large section there. Um as that continues west, I'm not sure. Um I was involved in the planning for it through through Utah, and so I'm not sure um how it connects um through Nevada or California, but it is on U- US Route six and other mostly state routes through the state. Um but it is also designated US Bike Route seventy-seven. So it's a little confusing because there's multiple numbers involved there.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um I think with that, I would ask if uh someone would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance. someone would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance for the active transportation plan?
Mister Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number one-one dash zero-one dash two thousand twenty-two, which establishes an active transportation plan for Santaquin City.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Second? Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
We have an active transportation plan. Thank you, Kai. Appreciate all the work that you've put into this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I just skip on down or do you want me to get the next one? Uh, this resolution, uh, first off, we need to move out of city council meeting and into what's called a CDRA. That is a community development association that gives us a few ways in which we can deal with things such as properties or other. So with that very simple uh explanation, if those of you that were here or watched on Zoom realize what I had to go through just to get this through the budget process in in June, I have a script so I can read. And it will keep us on task. So need to have a motion to recess from the regular city council meeting and convene a meeting in the Community Development and Renewal Agency for Santaquin City.
So moved?
Moved.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Hathaway. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
We are now in the CDRA. These are board members in a CDRA. And the reason we keep it as a board is because we still represent the city and we're making decisions on city things. But we're doing it through a renewal agency, which allows us a little flexibility to do some of the uh things that you'll see in the following. So now that we have uh entered the CDRA, I'm now the chairman or what am I now?
Chairman.
Board Chairman.
Board Chairman, not the mayor anymore. So I just got out of being mayor because board chairmans aren't voted in for a very long time, so I'm thinking about resigning. We'll move on. I need a motion to approve Resolution eleven oh one, twenty twenty-two CDA, adoption of the project area plan. I need a motion.
Uh, are we gonna sh- are we gonna share any information about the plan with the, in the meeting or?
So first of all, we need to make sure we're titling it correctly. This is the Westfields Community Reinvestment Area Project Area Plan. But I I'm happy to share. I know we talked about it in the in the um work session. I'm I'm happy to answer any questions that we have or 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 I thoughts if you may or do just, or sorry, board chair to uh whatever you have me do there.
We're now dealing with properties, properties that the city owns. And uh, what we're doing is taking those properties and moving what we can move into this Westfield uh project plan. And that allows us as a CDRA to deal with the land, make developments and move it along um almost as though we were developers. But keep in mind, Santaquin City is not developers. We're trying to be smart about every piece of this. And I I do want to say, this isn't something that came up over a month. This has been months and months and months of work to come up with a plan to bring businesses into this city, jobs into this city, make property which is zero on the tax rolls in in the hands of uh industry and bring what we have wanted, a little bit of relief to our city in the form of utilization of that property. The only way that we can do it unless we just turn it loose and say, well, we'll sell it and we'll sell it to a developer. Then the next day, you know that developer's gonna be in and we'll have all kinds of high-density housing there or whatever they fight for. As long as we keep this in the CDRA, Santaquin City has control of our own property. And because we are doing this in this manner, it allows us legally through the state laws to handle these transactions, make sure that we're in lockstep with the law. We have the eternity attorney at our feet at all times. And uh, we have tried to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and we're moving forward in a in a way in which we can make a development out of this. Have I said too much or too little?
No, I would just add, Mayor, that the that the purposes of the agency, the the sub-agency, the CDRA is to further economic development in the city is to help to prosper the city, to help build economic uh centers and those types of things to be able to further and and benefit the city and the residents. So I think it's very much in line with what we're talking about.
With that, can we move to um a vote?
Mayor, we take a short recess?
Yeah, five minutes. Okay. What just happened? Our recess is over. We played on the giant strides and the tricky bars. We're good to go. We are in the CDRA at this point and we have found, as we've looked at this with with legal here and our staff and we've noticed that there is one omission that we needed to make. And because of that, we cannot cannot act tonight on uh these plans as proposed. We will have to table it at present and move forward. And it's only because a T wasn't dotted and an I was crossed. So I'm glad that we have uh had someone's eyes hit that real hard and um even though we'd like to be moving on it tonight, we cannot. So we will table these two, table the resolutions.
Yes.
And uh, we will then act differently when we get to the other. So can I ask the board to table Resolution eleven one and eleven two?
You'll need to do that in two separate items, Mayor, two separate actions, please.
Can I have one for eleven one?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilman Hathaway.
Board member.
Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meekum.
Aye.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Montoya.
Aye.
I need a a similar motion for Resolution eleven oh two.
So moved?
Second?
I'll second.
Councilman, Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meekum.
Aye.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member um Montoya.
Aye.
They come out hard, I'm sorry. Now I need to reconvene the regular council meeting.
So you need a motion to 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 go out of the board meeting?
Leave this.
To close the board meeting?
Yeah. I don't know where I am in this. Help me out.
I I move that we close the board meeting and reconvene the regular city council meeting.
I think we can only do one at a time? Okay, second to that motion? Councilman Hath- or Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meekum.
Aye.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Montoya.
Aye.
We're now in the regular council meeting. There are two ish- uh issues that come up in the reconvene of the regular city council meeting, which would be ordinances eleven oh two and eleven oh three, the adoption of these CDR A uh projected area plans and uh the transfer of real property. Because we had an omission and gratefully we caught it, uh, we'll, we will table these to uh the next meeting that we can put them on. And so I needed a uh, can we do a table to carry both of them or do I have to do them separately? Okay. So I would ask for a motion to table ordinance eleven oh two.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
See, that flowed right out. Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
And then I need a similar one for ordinance eleven oh three, the transfer of real property.
So moved?
Second?
I'll second.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Boy, I stumble on that every time. I apologize for that and I take responsibility. I looked at that and uh I wish I would have caught it. It it means that we just have a few more days that we have to put some things together. But I want to make sure that these transfers and the way that we run this CDRA does not have any problem. So we learned a lesson and uh, gosh, I would have liked to have gone through that tonight. So in a couple of weeks or whenever we get together for this, uh, we will take care of it. Are we good?
Yes.
Good? You know, I always like it when a attorney says good. That's a good feeling. I just wanted you to know that. Why don't we go to the reports of the officers and staff and the committees and everybody else? Jason, Jason first?
Hey, I'll go first. Just a an update for you on on upcoming agenda items. Next Tuesday, we will be holding a planning commission meeting. Uh, was not on a regular meeting scheduled, but we will be holding one to to address some things that are are needed. Uh, the the development review committee, uh, we're gonna be reviewing a site plan for the Murdoch Uh, the the development review committee, uh, we're going to be reviewing a site plan for the Murdoch Ford dealership. Uh, they've submitted something, and so we'll be we'll be looking at that. And and then later that evening in planning commission, we'll have two public hearings for, uh, one being, uh, clarification on parking requirements for automotive service and repair. Uh, as the councilor members, there was some some work done on that, consolidating, um, um, definitions for automotive repair, uh, minor and major put put into one. Uh, but there's still parking requirements that are separated for minor and major. So we need to to make sure that we have a a, uh, also a consolidated, uh, parking requirement for that that land use. And then we have a public hearing for the annexation policy plan update. Uh, this is, um, we had a public meeting to to introduce the update to the annexation policy plan. There's been time for, uh, affected entities to respond to that. Uh, this is a public hearing at the planning commission level, which will, uh, be in preparation for a public hearing to be set for the city council meeting, which will be in December, probably, uh, kind of middle late later in the month, uh, for the the coun- council meeting that's scheduled then. Uh, we also will be talking again about the, uh, detached accessory dwelling units. The planning commission, uh, discussed that their last meeting. Uh, but there's some concerns that that we'll want to address further and have the planning commission look at again so that, uh, they can, uh, uh, again, give their their, uh, recommendation to the 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 council, uh, with a little bit more in-depth look at some things. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else to report, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. Norm?
Uh, just report on the city halls moving forward continually. You can see that they continue to to do stucco and working on the outside and trying to get all the windows in, et cetera. Uh, the tank and the water lines and the booster pump construction continues to move forward as well. Um, other subdivision work being done, development work that's being done will be tidied up over the the next couple of weeks to get through and into winter and and moving forward. That I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I apologize for the missed item on the agenda that we needed to have on there that will bring these other items back to you.
Thank you. Councilman Hathaway?
Uh, just, uh, one thing, uh, uh, the Mountain Eba Water Meeting was Monday morning, and I missed it. But Norm went went to it, and I asked Norm today if he could just kind of give a synopsis of what what went on there.
Sure. So a couple of, there was only a couple of, uh, action items on the agenda. There were some discussion items about the groundwater, uh, study that's going on to help us understand the groundwater in the south end of the county through the entire agency, which is all the way from Spanish Fork and Central Utah Water, Payson, Salem, us, uh, Goshen Strawberry and Strawberry Water Users, and and that will be coming out here in the next few weeks. The action items were to just have the scheduled meetings ratified last time. And then also, there's a a contract that will be let out to, um, help us with some, uh, study of some water banking that is now part of the state legislation. It's an option that we could potentially do through the agency, and that will be coming back with with a report on how that might be feasible and who might be entrusted, et cetera. It's it's, there's there's a lot to go into there, but it is something that would that was, uh, agreed to by the Mountain Eba Board to study that. We got a grant to cover fifty percent of it, and the remainder will be covered by the cities and the other organizations of the agency. And and that's a very minimal cost to us, it's already budgeted, so I think we're good on that. So that's that's really all that went on in there, and and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yep, thanks, sir.
Uh-huh.
The only other thing I got is is I'd like to, uh, give a shout out to Jeff Sitaway. Uh, after our meeting at Town Hall, whatever you want to call that, meeting at the Road Box, uh, last Wednesday, a citizen come up to me and Jeff after and asked if if we could look into seeing about the seniors in town that that maybe could use some Christmas ornaments or decorations. And Jeff went out of his way to contact John and Betsy and and maybe the youth council to see. There is a lot of, um, programs and pro- things going for the seniors. But I thought I think our concentration was more on the ones of the seniors that don't or maybe being missed. So I just want to thank Jeff for for putting the energy and trying to come up with something for that.
So to go along with that, the the U City Council has a had a quite extensive list already, and Betsy was working on that, and that's expanding that, so kudos to to Betsy and the U City Council as well for that, for the efforts that they're doing there, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Lynn?
Nothing for me.
Jeff?
Uh, just kind of follow up what what's actually going to happen. Um, John, because the resident who had the idea, she had worked with Meals on Wheels before, and so it's really the seniors who can't get out of their house very well. So they're not the ones going to the senior center, not participating in the activities as much. And so John is going to contact Meals on Wheels, he might have already, I haven't followed up with him, and he's going to get a list of the people they help and compare that to the list of people who regularly come to our activities and whoever we're missing, we're going to reach out to them, give them some gift baskets or something like that to help them out for the season.
Right.
Um, other than that, uh, one thing that I've had a my hand in, but honestly, most of the work has been from Ms. Santaquin and the mayor. Uh, we found a charity up in Salt Lake called Free Bikes for Kids to try to get some bikes for our kids here to hopefully, you know, try out the new mountain bike trail once it's ready in the spring. Um, looks like Emily just filled out the application for us to be a partner, and we've got Mike Romero from the Planning Commission working to get, I think, twenty kids' names to get them bikes, and so we'll be.
And and to add to that, we just got a, uh, an email about an hour or two ago where they've approved it.
About it, yep.
Yeah.
Just got the email saying it's we're, they're ready to, we just need to get the names to them by the third, the thirtieth? And then it was December third, right? Going to head up there and get them their bikes and helmets and, well, help out some kids in town. We can probably do it every year since we're we'll be a partner now.
That's good, and, uh, the queen, it was a lot of fun. I was on the the phone calls with her to this place, and, uh, what a good experience, what a a good young lady that is representing the city and great opportunity after we sat and talked about how could we do this? It was answered in no time, so it's a win-win all the way around. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Betsy?
Um, so as far as the seniors, in the last month, at, um, at the lunches, they have had, um, available health checks, and they are having, um, opportunities to sign up for the heat program and opportunities to take field trips on the fun bus. Um, they went up Santaquin Canyon, um, to the point that they could to see the fall leaves, and they went to a play, and they went to have a, um, a special meal, and it is a very affordable cost for those who sign up for that. And so those are fun activities just to build that community and let them, uh, make additional friendships and connections. Um, the youth council tomorrow is delivering bread to fourteen, um, different senior households in the city. So they are gonna load up on the fun bus and drive all over the city in, um, different neighborhoods, we have that mapped out. And thanks to Andrea Urban for driving the fun bus for us. And they're gonna deliver bread and wish, um, those individuals a happy Thanksgiving. And, um, Judy Robbins gave us most of the names, and then, um, John Bradley did, um, give us a few that are on the Meals on Wheels program. And, um, and the youth council is also going to be helping with holidays, and so we're excited for that. And we're also going to be hosting a board game on bingo afternoon for the senior citizens over the winter break while the kids are out of school, and grandkids are are invited to come with the senior citizens to play board games on bingo. And, um, I have a request, could we ask, um, some officers to go around and remove the campaign signs that are hanging on fences and things like that around town? Usually they take their clippers after the election and just clip those and take them down, those that are not collected. And I haven't seen any that have been collected by the people who put them up yet. So if we could do that, that would be great. And, um, I, with several others, attended, um, a mag growth meeting last Monday, a week ago Monday. And we all sat at different tables and were able to meet elected leaders and officials and business leaders from different communities, um, all over the south end of Utah County. And that was very, um, eye-opening to know that all, uh, all of the other communities, um, that were sitting, represented at my table anyway, um, were are dealing with very, very similar issues to what we're dealing with. Growth, traffic, um, housing. The one thing that they are really struggling with that I was able to kind of brag about was water. They're really struggling with water and how to deal with water, and I was able to explain to them the systems that we have in place, and they were very impressed by that. And, um, a couple of them might be contacting us for a tour of the water reclamation facility. So we'll see if they follow up on that. But one of the things that we were also all, um, in in unison on was our feeling about the Central Utah Water expectations um, for the new rules that they proposed. And other communities like Spanish Fork and Mapleton and Vineyard are also very concerned about those expectations. And so we had a really good discussion about a lot of those different things. So it was a very productive meeting, um, a good use of a couple of hours, and hopefully others got a benefit out of it as well. And I had invited Doug Welton, um, because he didn't know about it. So I was surprised that he didn't know about it. I don't know if he missed the email or what, but he was able to come at the tail end, and so that was really good that he made time on short notice to be there for a little while.
Thank you. Um, question, did the barricades get placed? But the gate's still locked?
Um, again, the gate is controlled by the county and the Forest Service. We did, we did get the barricades placed, but that was uh, under the understanding that if the if the gates could be open, they would be, and if they need to be closed, then that's up to the county, so. I I haven't been up there, you obviously haven't, so.
Yeah.
The the barricades did get placed, yes.
I think I'll call them in the morning.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Burgess Owens came and toured the waste treatment facility. He, uh, had all kinds of good things. He's a bioengineer and, uh, with chemical background. It's amazing to hear the questions he had as he went through that, but to see how impressed he was, how Santaquid had invested in such technology that none of our, when we put it in, nobody in the state had put it in. Now there's two or three that are attempting it and, uh, at great cost. And, um, we have operators, we know what we're doing, I believe, down there, so went across exceptional. I got an email from a guy named Gary Beas, there is a choir presentation to the community for Christmas, and wanted to make sure that that got out. Uh, it's going to be on the eleventh of December at the church on Fifth West. So, um, I think he had good intentions to make sure that the citizens of the city were invited to come.
Do you have a time on that, Mayor?
Uh, I think he said it was at six o'clock on that evening. So I'll look, I'll, uh, send it on to you.
Okay, perfect.
Um, trails, we have, uh, or should have reached the, uh, upper trail limit on the north side of the parking lot. An incredible view, just about anybody can walk that trail and get up there without having to stop and take a breather. It's take you a little over a mile and a half to get up there, I believe. But, uh, it meanders up through those trees, it's absolutely fun to get on.
And also one that directly connects to the parking lot?
Yeah.
Awesome.
They all do at this point, with the exception of a bridge. So we have, uh,
Right now.
About a nut, about a mile and a half going the other way too, but it's covered with snow and mud. So we just sent Norm up so we could see if he'd have to change his shoes.
I made it.
That was about it. What a great.
Take another field trip.
This is a great committee that, uh, have been working on a park, what was it, twenty-five hundred hours donated by people? And then there are machines that have been donated? This is an incredible park. Ten months ago, when we talked about it, it was agreed upon by this council, we were going to see it through. We'll not only see it through, we're going to be riding it soon. So next spring is going to be incredible. They they've even put Hydra seating up, and they're planning on doing, uh, grass seating all the way up the trails in the next week or two. So it's all coming together, and it is all volunteer, so very, very much donated. I think we've pulled off what we presented. And, uh, it's a good feather in the cap of Santaquin because people are already traveling here just to see what it is, yet alone to ride it, so. Uh, oh, and the toilets flush all the time. They're coming, everything's coming together, thank you. Uh, anything else we need tonight? Any other statements? Okay, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.